All right, we're gonna, we're gonna begin. I'm sure the chairman will be joining us very shortly.
Just dial him on the phone and put him on.
If we have to.
I'm sure it's not that, because I texted him.
So, all right, what's the pleasure? Do we want to go over the line items first? Because it looks like an all-new positions. Finance Committee is, everything is on hold. It looks like they're waiting for. So.
Okay, there you go. You're in the meeting.
Good evening Chairman Didi. Okay. You want to go first page? Do it that way?
Or you want to use these?
This is what I meant.
Oh, this is what you used to use. Go through the three or four sheets and they, they make most of the decisions on that.
Next year Laura, this is going to be online on the screen live.
Okay. Which would you consider?
Honest to God.
You just go through this. This is, these are the decision making changes. This is what reflects all the changes.
Okay, so.
We'll go over that after.
All right. And we're going to go to the first thing. C A O Assistant C A O H R procurement. The amount. Forty-five thousand. And that's because we already have some funds encumbered?
Right, as it reflects as thirty's already.
Okay. I, I don't think there's any disagreement with this board. So, I think that's absolutely an okay by the select board. The next one, I think is okay by the Finance Committee and all of us is to get floating secretaries for all our boards and commissions.
Right, the, the primary ones we need to make sure we cover E D C, Historical Commission, Cultural Council, because I know they've been reaching out to Doug because of the, the need for the Zoom and all of these other, you know, technologies and as well as some of them not having board. They're going to make sure their minutes get done and filed in the clerk's office. I'm sure Mike would appreciate that type of support.
Okay. And that would be fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's the, the dollar estimate for pool of dollars based upon the board asking Joe and I to go and look into trying to give support to these other departments.
Okay. Moving to the Police Department. They're looking for an increase per hour for the records clerk rate. I'm trying to remember what justification was.
You can have to do dispatch changes coming up and some other stuff that they were going to be having the person do.
Smoglin?
This was in line with some of the additional requirements and also the coverage of the window time too during the day because once dispatch moves. I didn't think there was a lot of controversy around doing that.
Okay. Joe, any problems?
No.
Okay. And that would be an amount of one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Then the, the, where the chief is recommended to increase the overtime to reflect what it actually is. I mean, we can go back and forth. The reason that it has always been underfunded is to have that person in charge try to do the best they can, correct?
Yeah, I, I know. The board was going to look at some number up to that maybe as a compromise and see how it tracks.
Excuse me. I'm going to throw out a compromise of fifteen thousand dollars instead of thirty thousand?
Agreed.
We got two, Joe?
That's fine.
Okay, fifteen. And my pen went wrong. Maybe. Oh, I got it. It's working again. Recreational patrol line item increased five thousand.
Yeah, that's for both online and then, and he's also using L P P funds for the water.
Okay. Mr. Smoglin, any problems with that increase of five thousand?
No.
Joe, any problems with the increase of five thousand? Right, so five thousand. And we're going to E M S. I think we've already talked about the firefighter paramedics. And I think we are in agreement with that. And the benefits would be part of that package, correct?
Yeah, that's why I did both numbers that they listed.
All right, so it'd be sixty-two thousand and eighteen thousand six hundred, I think.
That was going to be probably the last one he was going to need for the you know, dealing with the staffing and the new model of coverage.
Okay, so I think we're in.
Ian, you will also have supported in filing for a grant application to secure.
Joe, no problem?
No problem.
Doug?
No issue.
Okay. Secretary hours increase for lake management, one thousand eighty-two dollars. Finance Committee apparently agreed with that. They seem to be doing a lot more work and assistance. Do they pay for any of this out of their evolving account?
They pay for boat ramp.
But they wouldn't pay for this, huh?
No, I mean, you could split the cost with it because some of this may end up handling that. How many extra hours was this Laura? Seventy hours?
Want to split it? Five hundred?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that.
Joe, five hundred?
Sure.
Okay, then we're down to the cemetery. Sexton increased two thousand. Finance Committee put it on hold. I got mixed emotions about this. I know we, Sexton has been doing a fabulous job down there. But I think we already agreed to a two percent increase in coal?
Well, that's what that did. Obviously, one of the things you're thinking about is the the philosophical change and service level change where you're going to be going possibly year-round burials. But if you want, you can discuss it now or you can go over that with the FinCom next week.
I, 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 well, I think I.
Because that's what these, these both relate to that.
Well, I already, I already expressed my concern what a person's going to be doing in the dead of winter all week long.
Except during birthdays.
Right, I mean, it's one thing to, to handle burial, but I mean, if you don't have any burials, what are you going to be doing? So. Pleasure?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Debate it with the Finance Committee?
I would, I mean, there's only, they talked about maintaining equipment, but there's only so much maintenance you can do over the course of, you know, November to now, right?
Right, and if you start getting snow in October and, you know.
You get it. But I do see, I do see a trend toward year-round burial, but I don't know how you, how you're doing.
Right.
But, so I think we can cover it with, with those guys next week.
I mean, obviously, right now, you know, when they have the gate closed, you know, what happens, people, people just walking as opposed to if it's open year-round, then you're going to be doing all the road clearing and all that other stuff too. But that's part of the discussion we're going to have.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try to debate that and come to some sort of understanding with the Finance Committee when we meet jointly. Is that okay with you, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay, down to Board of Health. Health Director. I think we have much of a choice, right?
I think, I think your board and the Finance Committee already committed to that. That other level a while ago and you've already advertised that you're filling that.
Right. And I think we already agreed to the increase in the hours for the secretary because of the workload, correct?
Yeah, we, we, Joe and I are letting them use a floater to help them out also right now.
So I, I think those, those two are a go. Unless somebody.
No, I think we committed to it.
Right. Joe, you agree we committed to it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Joe went to their meetings.
Yeah.
And then some, because they have the nurse program that they're coming online with one and a half nurses in the regional agreement. That's why I think they were okay with lowering the nurse line item to help offset the money going toward the secretary. Remember that grant? Yep, that six-town grant that Tanny had applied for is going to it.
Okay. Next, Council on Aging, Park and Rec. That was a temporary position and now it was on trial basis and now going to a permanent.
Right, they're taking the monies and redeploying them and annualizing the trial basis to a permanent setup with both. An department head and assistant department running both of those departments.
Well, just based on the budget here, it seems like it's already bearing fruit.
Oh yeah, there's more, you know, both David, especially Cindy has been going to the night meetings for the Recreation Board.
Okay. So, twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Doug's okay? Joe, you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. Library Assistant Director rate increase from twenty-four dollars and what's that, twenty-four and nine cents?
Point oh oh nine two.
Point oh oh nine two.
Laura, when you did this one, because the Selectman did that two percent coal, this is already going up anyway, right?
It's going up.
So the differential isn't as much because it's already going up. Still have to annualize. You have to annualize the twenty-four plus whatever it is and then if you go up to the southern number.
Okay. And why we have the Chairman of the Library Trustees right here, just to refresh my memory, the part-time circulation position, that's a new position, correct? All right. How would, when we looked at this Assistant Director rate increase compared with some of our other positions in town? I'm talking about similar capacities.
What would those be?
Well, if it's an assistant to the director.
Assistance in Highway Department, you've got an assistant, you have assistant statutory people in the Treasure Collector's Office and in the Town Council.
In, in, A, is it similar?
Those are in the twenty-six range?
With the coal, it's twenty-seven.
Okay. So this would put the person in similar to other assistant positions in the town?
That's correct.
Doug?
I, I don't. I see that, I see it. The problem is the wage pressure everywhere right now. So I don't, you know, budgetary pressure is going to be very real here and almost like to kind of see if there's a middle ground or, or we need to.
One, one way to look at it, if you look at the like, the like, the last three years. Assistant is getting paid less than paid like three years ago, which should be tired. No.
Okay.
It just kind of brings.
Okay. Okay, so it's, you're still phasing in that person.
Right.
With a, with a less of a rate when they were brought on originally.
Okay.
Because instead it was like fifty, this person like three years ago, this person stopped. It's something. So you're just kind of bringing along for the other person.
Okay. All right, so. If we agreed to that.
Mike, the other last new person that was added to the library, that was just two years ago. I think we just added a new person to the library about two years ago. A new after five years of requests.
Oh.
Right, doesn't that sound about right, about two years ago?
Yeah.
So. Right, so that had just been addressed two years ago. If you look at the budget of public cities, that might add an assistant. The number estimate was like three years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I think we understand that.
Yeah, that we're fine with. I think Russ is talking about the other, the other proposed part-time circulation position.
Let's, let's.
This would be like a ten or twelve-hour a week. Person is in the evenings, there's only one person to serve. And if you're probably who are vets or whatever going on in the community, it's to be in multiple places. Because right now, during the day, there was not a problem. You've got multiple people, like more than one night, only got one person to serve.
Okay, let's.
This would be just adding the ten or twelve-hour a week, now the second person in the evenings.
Let's, let's make sure that we're in agreement on the increase on the Assistant Director first. Doug, you kind of.
I, I hear Mike's point.
I'm talking just the Assistant Director right now.
Yeah, I get it. But I think you have to look at it in total with the next one and see if we can hold off on the, the cert position until we cover, we get the pay rate right on the Assistant Director.
Okay. Joe? You heard what Doug said? You want to go along with that?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to go along with that increase and why don't we, you want to say hold and we'll talk this over with the Finance Committee?
Exactly.
So that one's going to be on hold. We hear you, Mike. We just, we're, you know the budget process.
Priority point of view, if you want to take care of the existing person, that would be first.
All right.
The next one, that's through the Channel Fifteen revenue that comes in.
Right, and we've just kind of all agreed to that, so.
Right, because we restructured all the duties there.
Yep.
And significantly more than the last people that were there. In fact, even though that says it's going from five, it used, you used to have it at six even.
Right.
So that's sort of like what Mike was talking about earlier. Someone came in at a lower number.
All right, and it's, it's like we said, it's a different, it's a different animal now.
Right, this is not taxpayer.
Right. Okay, I don't have any problems with it.
Nope.
Doug doesn't have any problem. Joe, any problems?
No.
Okay, those two are done.
Same thing for the next item where we weren't making sure that, I've got people going around helping to cover meetings.
Right, but that's already listed up on the top, right?
Correct.
How come it's listed twice?
I think it's probably where it probably comes out of a bucket when they go to put it at the.
Already in the red.
Up, it says. Town complex got cultural council there.
No, no, that's a different.
Well, it says.
Yeah, this is also for meeting. This is for people coming in and doing stipends for covering meetings, not Board Secretary stuff technically.
Can't buy me one more times.
Yeah, slower from the guys in the back.
Ken is here, he's covering the meeting. It's under a stipend system.
Yep.
When John Goddard came in, they'll, I'm not secretaries taking minutes and filing schedules and doing stuff.
But it says on this sheet, it says Board Secretary Anticipated Cost Not List. See Town Complex Request Above.
Did you say the word secretary on Channel Fifteen?
No, it's Cultural Council. Next line down.
No, 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 next line down, Cultural Council. We already moved down to this one.
The Cultural Council had.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
So I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it because we already approved the number up above, Russ.
All right, so.
You and I are at least on the same.
Cross that line right out.
Exactly, just cross the line.
There you go. I thought I was going crazy.
No, I thought you rolled it here.
You, you, no, I skipped over there because we already.
You skipped over.
No, no, we already agreed to all that.
Okay.
Who's on first?
Kevin Keston.
Okay. Page one done. Uh, Department Select Board, hired service increase for fire command staff recruitment. They, they say yes, and I think we put in for it, so it's a yes.
Yeah.
Accounting Audit of Accounts, increased by four thousand dollars for a single audit required. I don't think we have any choice on that.
Right, and that's something that Laura and her staff had worked out with the outside audit firm. Obviously, all the funds that are coming into the community are tripping some of those pressures.
Okay, so that's no problem. Conservation, consultant increase for compensation during training of new coordinate. I, I'd like to kind of.
Next one, you're holding an interview.
Right. But I'd like to put this on hold until we find out what we're going to be doing because if, if I'm not mistaken, we found out that one of the applicants dropped off and now.
Right, and we.
Now we just have one applicant?
Right, we have, the Chair, we have an interview next month.
Okay. Doug, you have any problems with putting this on hold?
None whatsoever.
Joe, any problems with putting this in on hold?
No.
Till we find out what we're doing. Economic Development Increase, one thousand four hundred. Finance Committee says yes, and I think that would bring you back up, right, Mike? So, I don't have a problem with it. We're through COVID, things hopefully are going to be going in the right direction.
Joe's here.
Joe's here? Okay, we're looking at a one thousand four hundred dollar increase in economic development. And we had cut them last year like we did a lot of boards and commissions to make up for an eighty-five thousand dollar shortage.
And we were, I was at their meeting and we, we actually talked about this very topic, so I would be a hypocrite and a jerk if I said no to this. Because we told them to put it in their budget and ask for it.
Okay. Joe, any problems?
Mine's an iPhone. No.
No?
There's plenty of problems, but not with that.
Okay. Uh, we're, we're on computers now. Munis Training Increase From Six Thousand to Twelve Thousand Due to Upgrade. I don't think we have any choice on that. Managed Service Provider Increase Eighteen Thousand. I don't think we have any choice on that. And Managed Service On-Site Member Cover Absences of I T Staff. And that is to be determined. You want to say anything, Lauren?
I put out another request to get a, to get a quote. And I haven't heard back, but what we're looking for is just someone who come in and be available to our staff when Jim or.
Is not here physically, I'm sorry.
Are we talking under five thousand?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm not even going to answer the question. I'm going to stay away from it because.
Okay.
Hope any potential.
We, we might have that quote by the time we meet with the Finance Committee.
I hope.
Okay.
I asked again.
So we'll put a hold on that.
That's a hold.
The Munis one, I think you need to do.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any choice on that. Police Department Cruiser Maintenance Increase For Tires For Fleet Seven Thousand Dollars. I think we're in agreement on that. Don't want bad tires. Ammunition Firearms Increase Ten Percent Increase Two Thousand Sixty-eight Dollars. We all know that price went up, so I don't think we have any problem with that. Canine Supplies Training Increase To Cover Additional Costs Of Supplies Five Hundred. Bog food is going up.
We're going to put the dog on a diet. And then we also should, but no, I think we have to support it, but I'll work with those guys to get another, with some charitable organization to put together some kind of event to raise this money. We need a budget for it, but we'll, we'll try to offset it here.
It's.
I'm sure it's attainable.
It's, it seems that every year, once we put the word out, we get a ton of donations for the canine.
That's correct.
Program, you know?
And no one wants our little buddy going hungry, so step up.
Okay, so we're going to say yes to that unless between now and the time we meet with the Finance Committee, somebody comes forward with a five hundred dollar donation.
Correct.
Okay, Cemetery. Add A Line For Miscellaneous Supplies.
Laura, this is just, is this just moving? So it's just moving from one to another?
Okay.
So it's really still, it's not moved that month. But it's not new that month.
Okay, we're moving on to Park and Rec. It looks like Mr. Mish must have gone up and met with them. Wally Park Lawn Care Increase Due To Fertilized Cost Increase Three Thousand Six Hundred and Forty Dollars. Finance Committee Says Yes. Rail Trails Expense Increase To Help With Trail Maintenance Two Thousand. Finance Committee Said Yes. Maintenance Ad Line For Field Replenishment Repairs Two Thousand. And the Finance Committee Said Yes.
You now have the new supervisor dealing with issues up there.
Okay. And I would imagine that Mr. Mish must have been up there as the liaison.
Sutton's killing us.
Well, I think he also met with Cindy Sullivan.
So between Cindy Sullivan, Dave Sutton, and Terry Mish.
Oh my gosh.
But they've all said.
They're, they're doing a great, all kidding aside, I mean, it, it needs to be done. For what they're, what they're talking about doing there. I've talked to David, I've talked to Cindy. And it's also having the buildings and grounds take responsibility for Wally Park and the rail trails. Take the Park and Rec guys from having to bomb down a trail after a rainstorm and having the police help out and stuff like that. It's all going to be very beneficial.
All right, so I'm going to say yes. Doug says yes. Joe?
You know, we're a small town, but as you see, we're slowly coming, turning into a little city, right? And these are, that's the right step in the right direction to make all this work, so yes, I support it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Get it.
All right, Ag Committee Ad Line For Consultants Seven Hundred and Fifty Dollars. Somebody refresh my memory, I don't.
Recording.
Yep, solve that problem. He probably has a laptop and a phone.
Well, he had the phone, but I turned it up because I called him online, but it, once he was online, I turned off.
Yeah, but he was then here twice, so we were worried that it was the Zoom bomber.
Yeah. Ag, yeah. Oh, here. You got it? Yeah. I'm trying to remember.
My I T department.
Diane, where's the dogs?
Consultants are to promote agriculture, protect fire lands, outreach to other ag, state agency resources, and becoming increasingly important. My only concern with that is we have a Department of Agriculture that, and we're very fortunate, we got Ron Hall lives right in Granville, uh, who heads up the Agriculture Preservation. And anytime you contact the Department of Agriculture, they're out here helping at the drop of a hat, so. I'm not sure what the, what this person is going to be doing, especially somebody for seven hundred and fifty dollars. So. I, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I, I don't know, I'd have to have a lot more justification to, to go with something like this. I don't understand it. So, I would be declining, declining this request.
I think, I agree, and I think we should, maybe we can, we can work with Bert and the other committee members to make sure that they get on the same page with the gentleman from Granville and see what resources he can bring to bear.
Or the entire Department of Agriculture, because I, you know, my farm is in A P R and, and those people are out. All you have to do is make a phone call and they're out to help you. If you have any problems, any concerns, if there's a, a problem with motorized vehicles on your property or anything. It's just a phone call away. Uh, there's offices, you know, right here in Western Massachusetts and.
And it's already being paid for with our tax dollar.
Right.
So, no objection.
Okay, so I'm going to say no. Joe?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Okay. On to the next page. Okay, new copier assessors. They're the people that bring in the money. Haven't been a former assessor, I'm, I can't say no to this. Doug?
Agreed.
Joe?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with a copia. They're one less employee for how many months?
I'm not going to even ask for clarification on that.
They're one less employee for how many months? So I guess he's implied it.
Oh, okay. All right. Master Plan Remaining Amount Fifty-five thousand. Uh, we're in it for a penny or a pound, so.
This is the second half. I don't see how we can circuit that now. I think it's, needs to be done.
We're going. So that's a done deal. Uh, Computer Technology. Uh, P C Laptop Stocking Station Standard Request Increase Amount Eight Thousand Two Hundred Dollars. Finance Committee Says Yes. Uh, Munis Upgrade Project Five Thousand Eight Hundred Sixty-eight Dollars. Finance Committee Says Yes. And I know Ms. Smoglin isn't going to say a word, so I'm going to say I don't think we have.
I can talk to this because. I mean, full disclosure for anybody who's listening, watching, I don't get involved in any procurement activity on behalf of any technology. in any procurement activity on behalf of any technology stuff for town. And it's all done according to procurement law. And it's all at arms length. I have talked to Carl and Laura, just in general, and Jim Middleton, just general positioning. You know, the trend to buy laptops instead of desktops so that we can be more mobile as the town adopts all this wireless infrastructure and are able to move around to have meetings and encourage teamwork and stuff like that. And God forbid, there's another situation like we just went through where we have to distance employees or more able to do it.
Right, we can pivot in the event of another pandemic.
I am so tired of hearing that word, but yes.
Which is one of the reasons why we, we were the last municipal building to have the Wi-Fi in it because police and fire had to be done first.
Correct. But that's just a general overall trend in business period.
Right.
And, you know, equivalent laptops have gone up in price just because everything's gone up in price. It's a little more expensive to buy a laptop than a desktop plus monitor plus whatever, but it yields its benefits.
Okay, so I'm going to take that as a yes. Joe? Yes on both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Town complex, town complex ADA improvements $3,000. I think that's a no brainer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's a recurring one, usually three to five a year.
Right. I think we're on hold with the riding lawnmower with snow removal attachments. I think that the general consensus seems to be that we need something a little larger that is a little heavier duty than what was proposed. I've asked Mr. Sutton if he could get specs. I suggested talking to the school, see what the specs was on that one that they had purchased. And he said he would get back to us hopefully by the time we meet with the finance committee. So.
So that's a hold.
I am, I am the last person to advise anyone on agricultural or tractor equipment. So of anyone in this room or on Zoom, I'm sure. But even I saw that the equipment that he was proposing was penny wise and pound foolish. He needs more than what he was asking for, and he was just bashful about asking for it as the new guy. I think there's other folks that can advise him and tell him what he needs, but, and that's why it says maybe increased up to $15,000. We'll have to reconcile that hopefully by the time we meet with finance committee next week to make sure we get the right line item plugged in here.
Right. Joe, no problem?
Yeah, I, because the problem with Dave Sutton is he'll buy a smaller piece to appease everyone, but me and you both know he tackles everything. So that piece of equipment will be used everywhere else. So yes, he needs something a little bit bigger.
Okay. Police department, two cruisers, standard request 1,900, 109,500.
And those things aren't getting cheaper either.
No. And I think everybody's agreed to that. Portable radios, standard request of $10,000. That's where they replace so many a year, correct? So that's a standard yes. Computer equipment, standard request $13,905. Again, to replace equipment on a regular basis. Then they have a request for radar units for police cruisers, standard request 2,134. Again, replace equipment. Now, now he's, instead of, they decided on one patrol rifle.
Remember last year, we gave him a certain dollar threshold and he was only able to acquire certain things with it, but not everything you'd asked for last year?
Yep, yep. So he's, he's gone back to one rifle, 2,134. Dive equipment replacement 2,244. So, and a paper shredder of 2,210. Anybody have any problems with that? I think last year we gave him 15,000 or something like that, so.
I was going to actually mention that. That's probably not a bad idea, but he's delineated here. Either way, or you can just give him the money to report it now.
I think, you know, this, it's a smaller amount, so I'm, I'm happy with it.
That's fine. And, and the dive equipment, if I recall, that they've got stuff that's coming up against its age limit to be certified for diving, which is kind of important.
For some reason, I don't see a yes. Oh, yes, I do. I take it back.
They yes everything.
They yes everything.
Even the boat.
Even the boat. I didn't mention boat, I was just going to keep that separate. I, I, I think that they make a good case for replacement of the boat.
Yeah, and don't forget the context of that. That relates to like management.
Right.
They're looking for 10,000 for some other stuff related to their pontoon boat.
They'd take the old motor.
And they'd be able to take the old motor and then they would have to just reduce their 10,000 request down to one. So this has other implications where you'd be able to do some other requests.
Okay. So basically looking at 120,000. I, I'm wondering if, if that isn't something that we want to place on the special town meeting warrant so that, you know, perhaps this might be something that we would use free cash for, order the boat that much quicker.
Sure, that and the other priority is the ambulance replacement.
But I mean, those would be.
From the accident.
Yeah, those would be two, I think, things that would be good for the special town meeting so we can act immediately.
Yeah.
Can I pause and ask a question on the ambulance? Based on the, the insurance proceeds from that, do we have any other remedy against?
I, I, town council looked at it. They don't believe they, there are enough assets on the other parties to go against. So that has been looked at. The chief and I have done our due diligence.
All right.
And as a general rule, you know, it's one of those things where their, their policy is ambulances, school buses and motorcycles are not replacement class.
I get it. It's just, it's unfortunate that, you know, a horrible act is, is going to end up costing the taxpayers tennis athlete a significant amount of money.
But that's no different when someone wrecks one of our own personal vehicles, you never get the same amount either.
No, I get, well, I get it. But then you can always go after for diminished value or whatever else. And I under, I just, it irked me when I was reading that, that documentation today.
Yeah, so the.
Because it's a lot of money.
The, you know, the ambulance is a very important thing that's going to have to be addressed.
No doubt.
We, we will have a loaner and the other new one, the new first line one is coming in, in July. But you're, you know, you're using two ambulances now, so.
All the time.
Oh, right.
Do we have the loaner here now?
No.
Right, so.
No, the important thing that, that, you know, and I don't want to get too much off track, but, you know, minus what we'll get from all the proceeds, checks and all that, the other thing is it's not just getting this new rig that we're going to get from a dealer to, you know, give us a year's worth of time, but it's also the outfitting of that. That's going to be where the initial money is going to be spent first. And all of those pieces of equipment that were damaged in the accident will be transferred to the other new rig that comes in, you know, 12 months from now, 15 months.
All right. Joe, any, you don't have any problems, right? The boat?
I can see him, he looks like he logged on with speed.
Yep. Joseph?
He looks like he's got a tan.
He's probably on a boat right now.
Let the record show that Joe froze. He'll call back in a minute, sorry. Yeah.
There he is, there he is, he's back. No problems with the boat?
You, you muted.
And frozen.
Well, then he's on.
No, we didn't, we wanted to protect it.
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving down to the fire department then. Air tanks, 1,500 each, six of them. And that's, I think we agreed they'd be doing that on a regular basis. Utility box for utility truck 5,000. I think that makes good sense to me, you know? Replace 12-year-old car two with four-door pickup with cap, $39,900. Finance committee said yes.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, I did speak to, fire chief was okay with this possibly being repurposed and assigned to the buildings. This is in better shape than before.
Okay. I'm going to make another suggestion because we know it's taken a, a long time to get vehicles. I, I, you know, I'd like this on the special town meeting warrant.
Oh, this one?
Yep.
Well, we can, we can talk about that.
Right.
Right, like, I think they're going to be challenged around that number for a pickup, a four-door pickup with a cap at that number. Randy came back to us this week with big numbers and Randy had a F something in his thing, Ford stopped taking orders for anything F-250 and higher this week for the rest of his model year. They're done.
Those numbers, those numbers are small compared to the memo he just gave us today on the pump station sewer.
I don't even want to know. It's scary. Double the cost.
Really?
Double.
That's right, he just gave us a number.
Double the estimate. Anyways, that would be my suggestion, you know, that the police boat, this and, I can't even think.
Ambulance?
Ambulance, to be placed on the special just to get them going as soon as possible if the voters approve. All right, public safety, police department hallway back entrance floor replacement 9,900.
Yeah, this is another, you know, they did a project this year, this is another project for next year. And then also over in the fire department is an issue they want to get addressed.
The fire department?
So this is, this is each, each building in each department getting one.
Right. I don't have a problem with it. Joe, any problem?
Sorry?
Joe wants me to call.
Okay. Having a little communication to break.
That's okay. Okay, Joe, there you are. You can talk to, Russ is asking you if you have any issues with the public safety building capitalized.
Joe?
Joe?
Any problems with the 9,900 for the police department? Or the 12,000 for the fire department bay door repainting? Okay.
He was on both phones. Yeah, he's, he's got it. Joe, you got to mute yourself. Actually, you are muted, so I don't know why that's on the computer if you're using the phone to your audio.
All right. We're going to take a couple-minute break here. Mr. Mogul had to take a phone call and we're having a little audio problem with Mr. Didi. So we're going to take a little two-minute break here and hopefully work everything out. Joe now?
Yeah, he's speaking to you through my phone and it's muted.
Ah. All right. We're ready to restart.
Joe, Joe, Russ wants you to know that the piece that just showed up.
Thank you, Mr. Didi. All right. Did you restart the?
No, we've not, okay.
Oh, did you, did we lose Joe or he's just?
We took, we were having problems with communication. We took a two-minute break because you had to leave. All right. Everybody is back. We seem to have the communication up and running with Chairman Didi. Mr. Mogul is back in the room. And we're down on emergency management, emergency management vehicles, second use from another department.
That's a funny one for me, anyway.
Yeah, I, I don't, we have, we have the pool cars available. I, and I don't think, Charlie was talking at nighttime. I don't see why we can't figure out a method of, if he needs a car at night, somebody leaves a key somewhere with the police department or fire department, he picks up the key there if there's a problem.
Well, that was, that was what he was going over with the Capcom when Joe and I were holding those meetings back in February. It, it didn't reach the threshold to, you know, qualify for a new vehicle. And then the whole thing came down to, well, he wanted another whole vehicle because he just didn't want to come and get the keys at certain times. And, and so there are issues where that could be done or, or he could just use his accounts for mileage reimbursement. And he didn't want to, he didn't seem to want to do that either. He just wanted to have a car assigned that would be maybe used 30 times a year.
Yeah, I, I'm.
Right now, you have a full command unit and a military surplus deuce vehicle that aren't really used that much. Looking for a third vehicle that wouldn't be used that much.
Yeah, I appreciate everything they do, but I'm a no. You know, I don't need to put it on hold. How about you?
I was a no.
Okay.
And I don't think it was explained well enough during the hearing, and I thought it got enough pushback in the hearing that it was kind of understood.
Joe? No?
It comes down to a convenience factor. That, that's all it came down to. That's how I understood it. You can put in for mileage, it's, it's, it's difficult, I'm sure it is. Oh, well, do it. No, I'm not leaving a set of keys to a car somewhere. I'm not doing it.
Well, you could always grab a pool car like everybody else, you know?
Yes.
And if, if there's a problem getting the keys, we could leave the keys at the police department, fire department, he picks up the keys there if it's at nighttime.
An additional set.
Or even additional set.
Or additional set, there you go. Okay.
Yep, just keep tracking mileage and let us know, that's all.
Lake management, buoys and moorings. This is a, a request increase amount of 2,400. I guess they've had more damage and the price, of course, has gone up.
Yeah, Chief Bishop and I used, helped them out last year with some other funds to replace some of those.
Okay, then, then they have the lake level rain temperature data, standard request $200. Replacement camera, standard request increase amount 1,100. That's the control of potential vandalism down there. And of course, we've agreed to the boat and I think finance committee agreed to the boat also. So this would be reduced to $1,000 from 10,000. So we're going to put down $1,000. No problems? Doug, Joe?
No.
No problem.
All right, lake restoration, Canal Brook Beaver Dam and log removal 5,000.
Yeah, I just checked with Dick. That had been, originally that was operationally, and then we voted at town meeting last year to transfer it to a capital fund so it could be properly carried over under the municipal regs. And then they ended up using most of it, so that's why they need it again.
Okay. So I guess that's a yes. Ms. Mogul, yes?
This is the Beaver Dam?
Right.
Yeah.
Joe, yes?
Yes.
Okay, and the finance committee has put on hold Canal Brook dredge design and permitting, Canal Brook dredging. And I think we've all been following the emails that Mr. Grinnell's has been sending out. He's working with the federal government and different departments. And he seems to think that there's a possibility that there might be some movement in the, in the future, so.
He's also talking to John and Nick, our legislative delegation, about revisiting the issue of about a regional dredging unit.
Yep.
Because the Commonwealth had talked about, you know, all these great ponds that they have jurisdiction over. And it really makes sense for them to initiate and equip a program through the appropriate state agency, whether that's DEN, DCI, whatever, whichever one it may be, to have one of those units and have it go and handle several ponds a year.
It's a great idea. It's, it's a great idea.
And I still think in the end, I know they talked about it once before, but they should probably relook at the Canal Brook dredge design and permitting as a CPC activity. That, and I believe it's permitted under historical. They looked at it in the past and, and the board was mixed on it. I think they should revisit it, even if they have an informal at a future CPC meeting to see if that's something that.
Well, that's true. I mean, it's, it's no different than the Allen treatment. It's not, it's not some sort of an annual maintenance issue. It, it is truly a rehabilitation issue and would fall, I believe it would fall within those approved guidelines.
So it's something to think about. I mean, cause that's where, um, it's one of these things where this type of project is gonna come up and stuff that's sitting ready to go is gonna get a preference, the stuff that they have to design. And this design is not easy and the permitting is certainly not easy because it crosses different states and water and everything else. So having that ready to be, to go should something happen monetarily would be advantageous.
And, and even if Mr. Grinnell's is successful.
Correct.
On the federal level, I'm sure there's going to be some sort of town participation that they're going to be looking for, so. Uh, I, I, you know, I think I agree with the finance committee and put these two on hold.
Agreed.
Until we get more information. Now moving down to DPW Highway, paving project, standard request, fifty thousand. Construction standard request, forty seven thousand five hundred. Improvement standard request, thirty thousand eight hundred. Finance committee said yes to all those, and I think we already said yes to all those.
And you had, you had your budget meetings twice. You had your preview in January with the DPW director. And then you had your Saturday morning budget.
Okay. And then the three million dollar request bonding issue. Uh, finance committee put it on hold, and I think, uh, we need to put it on hold until we, uh, get through all the budget numbers and, uh, and meet with the finance committee. Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we need to come back to it, cause I think we can't continue to fall further, even further behind.
No. I mean, last year we did a million. The year before, I think we did two million.
Right.
Um,
Your latter, but you've got other projects you need to be mindful of. Your general obligation bond uh, package, which is why you have those eleven by seventeen sheets in front of you that you can study in preparation of your meeting with the finance.
Right. I mean, I think we're all in agreement. We're going to do something. It's just what number we plug in.
Right, and you may wanna do some of it with free cash.
All right, then we're going to the last page. DPW Road Machinery. Uh, one-ton pickup truck with plow package, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Finance committee put it on hold. Tractor with mower attachment, original request, a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Uh, now it's one eighty-five thousand. Finance committee.
We've approved that in the past.
Right. Finance, finance committee put that on hold. Hot Box, original request, forty-five thousand, went up to forty-eight thousand. Finance committee said yes. Paving box, original request, thirty thousand, went up to thirty-four thousand. Finance committee said yes. What's your pleasure?
I think that, isn't the truck the replacement one for the one that's deceased?
No, that's already, the one that was deceased, I believe was a sewer truck, and that's why you're borrowing the old, uh, police dive truck.
The one with the famous rust ox bogo. You and the other selectman that's been here since the early eighties.
Oh, right, the early eighties. Yeah, that Randy's driving it now.
So is this, is this the one-ton pickup to replace the sewer truck, Joe?
No, that's already been done and that's under order. This is one of the green ones.
Okay.
It's one of the green, like, four fifties or five fifties.
Okay. I think pretty much we have come to understanding about the tractor and the mower attachments that it's being purchased with the two attachments so that it should be a cost savings. Plus it'd be new equipment, if in fact they can purchase it. So there should be a labor savings, you know, because you don't have to go out twice now. So. I, I'd be inclined to go with the tractor and put the, the truck on hold. That'd be my, my thoughts. I mean, we've been fairly good, I think, to Randy replacing equipment.
I think in the end, you're gonna need both of them. I'm fine with that for now. We'll have to come back and look at that. We put that tractor off long enough. I want that real trail spotless, so we're gonna need that piece of equipment, regardless if they wanna do it or not. But I think it's dumb tricks. There's another piece that we, we're, if you go and look, the other one is rotted and miled out, so it's time, but we can wait till next week and discuss the other one.
All right. So we're, we're gonna say yes to the tractor and hold on the other.
Hot Box and Paving Boxes.
I, yeah, we should do that. I think we've, yeah, pretty much agreed to those.
All right.
Uh, forty-yard trash box. I don't think we have any choice on that. Fourteen thousand.
We're starting to bring in more money for recycling, right, Lars? So we do have revenue offsets on that through UP grants, I believe. Yeah. Yeah, but we do, we do get it. I don't know if we get the whole amount, but, and I think remember before where we were, we might be getting paid for, um, some recycling.
Yeah, that's what Randy was saying.
Remember we were.
And if we put this off next year, that, that, that box is gonna be twenty thousand times.
Right. All right, cemetery. Finished surveying all part of cemetery. That's withdrawn. Let's cross that out.
Dave and his staff are gonna be in the roofing project.
Okay.
So it went to zero?
On the roofing project.
Yeah, cause they have maintenance monies to buy the materials.
Oh, that's my question. I can just make sure that.
And Kyle okayed it too.
Okay, completion of, completion of paving roads for new part of cemetery. Have they done any?
They gravelled them.
They gravelled stuff. Okay, they gravelled.
They had the base.
Okay.
They did the base. They created the, um, uh, the new layouts. They did the surveying.
Okay, so now.
This is putting in the, uh, infrastructure.
The asphalt. Okay. The finance committee said yes, so. I don't have any problems. Joe, any problems?
Nope, no problem.
Okay. Uh,
You're located up near the road, up near the College Highway.
Well, we have, uh, up near the College Highway Road, and I just bought a nice plot down.
People don't need to drive too down deep into it.
No, no, I'm, you gotta drive down by the pine trees now and.
Pine trees, okay.
I'm gonna be, Mert Seibert's down there, T.J. Welch and his family. We're gonna have like a, a town official row. You know, and it'll be a nice, it's, uh, I hope it's kept up well after I'm gone.
I hope it's full of potholes.
I hope mine's near the road, cause that's probably where it'll get thrown out. Joe was indicating he thinks it's gonna be potholes.
Potholes? Could you make sure the drainage is taken care of there, Mr. Didi?
No drainage, potholes, and we sure as hell ain't gonna mow it if you're there.
All right, I, it's just, it's just a stone's gonna be there. I'm not gonna be there, Mr. Didi, but it's the thought, the thought.
It's a thought, right. There's a thought.
All right. Enough of this levity. Uh, office expansion for Shine and Foot Nurse, five thousand dollars. I think that's a pretty reasonable request to take care of, uh, our grain community. Doug, any problems with helping out the seniors? Okay. Thank you. Uh, library tree removal, sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Finance committee wants to put it on hold. I, I, I don't have any problems with putting it on hold to, you know, to see where we are with removals.
Now, Mike, some of these are the trees that are bordering the facility. I know, I know that, but I'm just, I'm asking you for your observations. Going to the facility frequently, you see the, that perimeter of the trees there. And I guess some of them look like they're, um, you know, distressed or.
This is on the east side of the building, right?
Right, going eastward. Yeah.
We'll have to come back to this one. I'm gonna circle it rather than say no.
I'm, I'm saying hold, hold. I mean, we could see exactly, uh, what the situation is. I mean, we had Dave look at it, or maybe we could have Tynick look at it too and, and, uh.
I think they went out to bid on a couple of them. They got some quotes and some opinions, but, yeah, maybe have some other folks take a look at.
Okay. Uh, Wally Park Playground Mulch Replacement, three thousand. How come that's?
I'm thinking that there was some discourse on the finance committee with people who know more about mulch than I, I, but I'd like to have that discussion with them.
Okay.
Cause I, you got, there's a certain amount of mulch it gotta have there. It's not really up for debate.
Right, for code purposes.
I don't know. Right.
All right, we'll put it on hold.
Five zero dollars? Not three thousand?
No, add an additional.
Oh, three thousand.
Yeah, I think they could cut, if, if it gets approved, I'm sure they can cover it out of it.
I got it. Okay.
All right, so we, we agree to put that on hold for further discussion?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Ag Commission, well repair, five hundred dollars. Uh, finance committee put it on hold.
Where's the well? Where do they have a well?
That's community garden.
There, somehow, and I brought this up at the budget hearing.
Right.
This is the Sofinowski Preserve.
Right.
It is administered by the Conservation Commission, who has a revolving account that takes in funds to take care of their property.
Well, they also.
They were the ones.
They have a separate land maintenance account too.
Right.
Not even the revolving. They have general fund like.
Right. So they basically started this community plot. And now they've kind of turned it over to the Ag, but Ag doesn't have any money, so I.
Or ownership control.
Right. So I, I, you know, that's why I said to, uh, Bert Hanson, the chairman of the Ag Committee, I said, do you have a re, revolving account? Do they have a revolving account, the Ag Committee?
No.
Cause they're collecting monies for these plots. Where's that money going? If it, the monies go into the Conservation Commission, then Conservation Commission should be taking care of this, this well.
So wherever those funds are being deposited should be able to be used for these expenses.
From the revolving. They have to budget for it, but at least they didn't know the answer to that question yet.
Right. Okay.
So what's your pleasure?
I'd leave it on hold till we resolve that issue.
Right. I, I think it should be coming out of the Conservation Commission funds. You know?
You can discuss that next week after you.
Okay. So you wanna put it on hold?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Channel fifteen, equipment and equipment upgrades, nine thousand. Again, that isn't tax dollars. That comes out of the, uh,
Right.
Channel or Comcast.
Right, and this, this relates to two things, the continued finishing of the broadcast infrastructure, the meeting rooms, which is gonna include, um, this, this is gonna be merged with present year money, carried over money, and this new money is gonna help us deal with the, um, installation of all the appropriate stuff through our vendors and with the help of Ken and Peter to address the issues for, um, this room. The Selectment Conference Room, the room near the elevator, and the land use room upstairs. As well as the movement of that Channel fifteen office to upstairs off the elevator. Uh, once the, uh, the reps office is relocated. And I know Russ is heading up that.
Well, Mr. Didi is also helping me on that.
So anyway, these are the dollars that are necessary to go along with the existing carried over dollars based upon the budgetary, um, quotes that are received through my, uh, vendors. And I know Mr. Sutton would like to get it done tonight.
All right. Yes, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Joe, yes, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, sewer grinder pump equipment, standard request, thirty thousand dollars. Infiltration in, in row, inflow removal, standard request, ten thousand. SCADA upgrades, standard request, ten thousand. I chuckle because I still haven't seen the savings yet. Uh, Prifty Park Pump Station upgrades, that's definitely on hold.
No, that's the thing you've had.
Right, right.
In front of you here, originally, your ARCA authorization last November was for, for three hundred, and then Randy had mentioned along the way that we were gonna need some more, so we were starting to identify additional money out of the unprogrammed ARCA money that you had for the first, what is known as tranch. That's all, another word for that is an allotment, but the federal government's got a different term for it. And of course, you have another tranche coming this year of it. But, uh, in the meantime, when he did the bids, uh, by the time they were done tabulating them all, they had one vendor and the number had, had originally estimated, which was three-something, had gone to six twenty-seven, which included the, uh, design and construction, uh, construction phase services, construction bid, uh, five percent contingency, brought it over to the six twenty-seven number. So obviously, wherever you go to, uh, make up these funds, might take away money that you wanted to deal with for other issues and other, like paving and other infrastructure issues. But, um, cause right now, until the water sewer rate study is done by the director, I, I'm not sure we should be authorizing any more capital until we have an idea what, what, what those, uh, rates look like for both water sewer.
And that goes along with the IMA.
Well, when the IMA drops off, you're gonna have, you had five different layered amortization schedules for different asset, aspects of the IMA. So those are gonna be dropping off the next several fiscal years down to zero, so. You're gonna achieve some dollars there, but those were dollars that came from the general fund.
Correct.
Which could be reprogrammed toward other DPW infrastructure spending.
Two things. One, yes, we've been carrying a good chunk of that sewer infrastructure on the tax rate since inception. The second I came here, just to hear you say amortization.
Yeah. Agreed.
Yeah, please. That's why I got it. Go get some pizza, Carl.
Anyway.
Mike, please.
Anyways, um, let's finish up this page. We're gonna finish up this page real quick. All right, so that is on hold. Cause we're gonna have to have some serious discussions on that.
Yep.
Okay, water hydrant replacement, standard request, twenty thousand. SCADA improvements, again, no savings yet. Fifteen thousand. Improvement, standard request, ten thousand. Leak detection, ten thousand. Water Management Act Permit Assistance, fifteen thousand. Finance committee said yes to all those. I don't see any, any big, uh, problem. Mr. Mogul?
Same issue with the rates.
Okay. Joe, no problem?
You'd wanna make a contingent upon.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. I got, uh, six forty-five, so we'll be back in ten minutes. And here. Pass the fruit down to the accounting department, cause they haven't had any. Uh, did I say fruit? That's.
So the way the system directors are gonna get, once the increase, and the other new positions.
It looks on hold. Once we get that.
Right.
Right. So once we get down and see, you know what's happening.
Right.
The school, we thought they were gonna go up maybe four hundred thousand. They went up eight hundred and fifty-six thousand.
The number of kids is going down every year.
It doesn't matter.
And the budget goes up.
Look at that. Look at our eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
I'm keto right now. Free cash, free cash in the last three years has averaged across three million.
Right. And you know we can spend that. We could spend that right here tonight.
Well, yeah, buy a couple of dunkers. It's gone.
Gone. Gone. You know?
Look at the cost of police cars. It used to be.
It used to be sixty thousand.
Would say, I need three Crown Vigs, sixty thousand bucks, I can get the state contract.
Right.
Now it's like fifty-five thousand.
Right. It's, 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 it's gone nuts. If we, we can even get them.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know. It's, you know, but I have people asking me, well, you don't have a, a budget problem. You know, but I have people asking me, well, you don't have a budget problem, you don't need to have a commercial or industry in South. I'm looking at them saying.
I pay a thousand dollars a year in real estate tax.
I'm, I'm pushing towards seven.
No.
And I'm there. I used to pay two. You know, I know I took a tour down the old farmhouse, I put up the new one.
Twenty years ago, the tax rate was twelve dollars a sunset.
I, I don't know. It's, I, I don't know where it's going to end.
But that is good to have a floater covering these various.
Yeah, we, we gotta do that because it's tough enough to get volunteers to do anything.
Right.
And now you're going to tell them, oh, they gotta run the owl, they gotta, they gotta get the minutes in, or somebody's going to file open meeting complaint against them, you know. And, and, and the chairman, who's a volunteer, he's supposed to email and tell everybody all the time what's going on. You should have a person there that helps assist to do all that. That's at the very least what we should be doing. At the very least.
But we didn't know that until the first budget hearing. And also, I heard that Susan was sitting there from Colts. Never heard of it.
No, well, well, it's, it's, you're sitting there one night, we're brainstorming, and finally said, wait a minute. This one needs a secretary. Let's get a secretary for everybody, get a floater.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's people out there that, hey, nighttime, go down, you know, they could probably do two or three boards.
Right.
Especially with computers, if they're computer savvy, and, you know, they could take care of all that stuff. It's just getting trained, getting used to the boards and things. I think we're heading in the right direction. But hey, don't, you know, you can tell the library trustees, it's not. Try to do what's best we can.
Oh, no.
Or you can tell her if she still had fees on books, we'd probably make up the difference.
Some of the true Brooklyn pie I had over there.
I was going to say, you didn't burn. unmute.
There you go.
Get their seat.
Okay, we are re, coming out of recess and meeting the meeting at six seventy-seven P M. Here we go.
All right.
Mr. Dede, are you with us?
Yep.
Mr. Dede is there. Okay. All right, we're gonna, Joe, we're going over these page by page.
Wonderful.
He doesn't have that sheet.
Oh, you don't have that sheet. Okay.
Major, because that just came today.
Uh, first page begins with the moderator, moderator's salary, and it goes down to finance committee salaries. And the only thing that I see that the Finance Committee put on hold was assistant human resource procurement position on hold, so I think we need to.
Which is on the same, it's on these sheets.
Okay, so we will, we will explain that to them, and I'm sure that they're, they will understand the importance of that position. Or at least they hope they do, and I hope the voters understand the importance. Page two begins with finance committee operation and goes down to assessor salaries. I don't see.
Just the audit of the accounts adjustment for the O and B regs.
Okay.
Not, no other changes.
Okay, they did reduce. Recommended reducing assessors. No, it's a line item. G A S B fifty-five services?
Gasby? Isn't that just level funded?
Am I reading it wrong? It looks like it was.
It's the line above, the audit of accounts that they penciled in the four thousand that was asked for on the earlier page.
Oh, okay.
They carried it in.
Okay.
Yeah, no, those are.
That gasby stuff is great.
Okay. All right. Page three, it begins with assessor's operation and goes down to legal operations.
They gave him the card.
How come legal operations have got zeros on it?
It's, that's our budget side.
Okay.
It's the.
All right. And we'll go to the next page, labor negotiator, goes down to planning board salaries.
Now, Russ, you're, obviously, you have your, you've gone through it. You're agreeing to the dollar amounts on the other pages, you know, that have been requested minus the differences.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So because Laura and Melissa need to make those, they need to populate those columns just like the Finance Committee's columns.
Right, if, if you see something that sticks out that.
No, I went through it with Laura today. Everything reflects all your decisions that have been accumulating over the last several months.
Right.
Every agreement, contract, all of that's reflected.
On, oh, on that page, on number four, the red line, we decided to hold that.
Which.
The consultant, consultant for the conservation.
All the other ones, you're okay with.
Okay, so that's, thank, thank you, Mr. Mogan. Right. All right, the next page begins with planning board operations and goes down to computer capital. Okay.
Right, Laura, you've got everything to make, to fill them all in.
Yeah.
Right. All right, next page, town salaries, down to annual town report.
The only thing, Laura, at the top of page six, where it's the board secretary for C C E and D, isn't it E D C? Right, I think I wrote on E D C on my copy. Yeah, so that's for Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
Historical Commission.
Who's E T C?
Ah, that's.
Kestner?
That's phone home, phone home. Oh, wait a minute, that's, that's somebody else.
Is there a sequel on that?
Ah, next page, police salaries, down to weapons maintenance. Okay, they put hold on part-time records clerk increase. We said yes.
Right, but those were all on these earlier sheets, so we already, already know what they wanted. And Laura's, Laura's already got your answer.
Oh, oh, okay.
So show reflected in the.
Okay, okay. All right, next page, we're still on two police cruisers, down to longevity of fire cells. Anything? Nothing? And we'll go to the next page, begins fire operations and goes down to.
So hold on, Laura, under part-time clerk on the fire, he's at ten thousand, he's keeping it at ten, but you have a red line there. So that's just forget about that, right?
Forget about it, yeah.
That's just a printer coloring thing. Other than that, it's all. All right, thank you.
Okay, we're back to page with fire operations at the beginning, building inspection salaries on bottom. Anybody see anything?
Yeah, Laura, under the public safety building capital, we got the floor there, so those are both good. That's good, I'm good with it. We've already looked at those earlier.
Oh, okay, you, you, okay.
You are not red on the left, but it's red on the right.
Okay, okay. Next page begins with building inspection operation, goes down to emergency management capital. So. Anything? Okay, next page begins animal control salaries, goes down to lake management capital.
Uh, Laura's going to reflect on their lake management, your, your adjustment on splitting that thousand eighty-two.
Okay, to five, five hundred.
Right, and you, and of course, they do have the revolving account.
Right.
That is ultimately under the select boards jurisdiction.
Okay. Good catch.
And on the boat motor, our number agreed with the Finance Committee.
Right, that's a thousand.
So that's a thousand.
Okay.
All right, then next is lake restoration operation. Down at the bottom, we're into DPW maintenance materials for gravel roads. They've got two things on hold. Okay, that's what we had at all. All right, so that looks good, right?
Yep.
Next page begins with DPW Highway Division Capital.
Mr. Vice Chairman, how come there's a highlighted line on the, under DPW Highway Division? Forty-one hundred dollars, I think it's conference and travel. We're, we're, it's highlighted. Finance Committee, they asked for forty-one hundred, Finance Committee gave them thirty-five hundred.
Oh, I think that's to reflect the adjustment you made in his auto lines.
Conference, travel, education. So we just make sure that we reconcile that with the Finance Committee.
Yeah, Laura, where it says conference, travel, education, just put slash auto. Okay? And then keep the boards one at forty-one hundred.
All right, next, back to the next page again.
Because again, this is, you know, we're moving away from trying to have more vehicles ourselves and putting.
DPW Highway Division Capital down to DPW Engineering Division salary. They put everything on hold, we agreed to the.
The bottom three items.
The bottom three items. And then we said we would talk about the other issue with them. Basically, when we see kind of what dollar amounts we have. All right, next page is DPW Engineering Division Operations down. All right, next page is D P W engineering division operations, down to sewer implementation salary. I don't see anything.
No.
Okay, next page, sewer implementation operations, down to council on aging.
What did we decide to do on the Sexton in the year round? We just gotta pencil, she'll pencil that back across for the reconciliation?
Yeah, she put on hold.
Okay, so we have those two on hold.
Because the important thing is when you go through this reconciliation process, when both boards decide on a number, then Laura's gotta enter that number so that she can keep an up-to-date running total during the meeting.
Correct.
So when we get to the final meeting, we'll all know what we're looking at there. Because essentially, you need to remember, this line item budget is but one article on the town meeting warrant. So, when this is resolved, that issue's done, and then there's other issues on the warrant, you know, we'll have other votes and other articles.
Out of trunk. Okay, next page, council on aging operations, down to park and rec salaries. So, I see council on aging, they have a yes hold on the five thousand, we approve it. And we approved it, so we're a yes. And we're a hold on the part-time position evenings for the library. And we're on a hold on the tree removal. And then the director and assistant, that's all figured out because we're splitting.
It's exactly what, what you're doing, you're splitting that up, so you end up having less money in the salary budget of council aging and more under park.
There you go. All right, next page, park and rec operations, down to cultural council operations. And we agreed with the hold on the bark mulch, or on the mulch, I shouldn't say bark mulch. And we said no to the consultant for- And we have a question on the community garden well repair, where that, those funds are coming out. Okay. Next page, historical operations, down to D P W paving projects. Anything? Okay.
Laura, this, but the principal and interest, Laura's got all the latest borrowing authorizations from last year's annual town meeting, which of course was the, the ambulance that's coming in a couple of months, the last dump truck that's not here yet, and the paving projects, and then of course, over in water, there was another one for that water line, but you took that out of the ARPA.
Okay.
And we may have to give Randy a little bit more on that one too, but he already knows the numbers.
All right, next page, D P W dump truck. Two eighteen, twenty eighteen, down to grand total of government. That's good. Then we go to water. And I don't see any problem with that. And then we continue with water. And I don't see any problem with that. And then we go to sewer. And the Prifty Park pump station upgrades, that is definitely on hold.
We'll make sure the finance committee gets a copy of Randy's letter today. You can also review, answer that meeting next week.
But just very quickly, and tell me if I'm going too far astray. If in fact, we see that the cost of that has doubled, and that was where we were gonna use ARPA money, correct?
Uh, you had already committed to three hundred toward it.
Okay.
And, but, you know, Randy had made it clear that there might be some more money needed, but even this, this was a surprise to him too.
Okay, so, and I'm just throwing this out there. If in fact, we get our heads together before we meet with the finance committee and say, you know what? Maybe we should put this off a year until we get to that next round of ARPA money.
Well, the next round is in January, is in, uh, next round is in June, that's your next allotment.
Okay.
And that's it. There's no other allotments next year, it's just-
In June.
It's happening in June.
Okay.
And the other thing to think about is, this bid that he has is only going to be good for so long. It's not going to be good if you wait till June on that other allotment.
Okay, okay.
If you're aware of that, I mean, at least when you get a bid, you know what the number is for a certain period of time, no different than the way the bids are gonna come in for the town hall roof and H V C. We've made it clear that those numbers have to be good for sixty days.
Right.
Because that gives you time to review them, process them, bring them to a town meeting, and take an action if you need to do that.
Okay. The only thing I was, and again, I'm just throwing this out there.
Yeah.
That if we should get together in the next few days-
Well, you're meeting Monday night.
And we come to a decision-
You're meeting Monday night before the Tuesday night.
Okay, if we come to the decision that we need to put this on hold, is there another project that's in this budget that we could allocate those funds for? Should we be thinking about that?
Um, that's probably very straightforward, you easily could, um, if you did that, you took those votes under the infrastructure, and if you cended that portion of it, then what you could consider is, you have to take a different vote to take the revenue loss cap money.
Yep.
We didn't do that back then, because when we did it back in November, the criteria was very onerous.
Okay.
So we only did the strict infrastructure ones, which didn't allow for other things in municipal spending. Well, now, since then, a lot of municipalities talked to Congress and they changed the criteria that did allow communities to take up to a standard deduction of ten million dollars. So you can take another vote for some number, minus what you've already signed contracts for, you know, the other stuff. You know, up to that balance of your two point four million, you know, plus whatever change it is, it's one point, it's two point eight nine or something like that. So you could take that vote, and we already have an email from the Department of Revenue that states that you would just be able to make those decisions at your meeting, just like you made the other ones in November. Because they're, they're considered a grant under chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A.
And I'm just throwing that out there.
And you could use it for paving, you know.
Well, yeah, you could do that.
You could use it for paving if you-
There's a couple ways to skin this cat too. I mean, if the, the project needs to be done or else it wouldn't have been in front of us. One is, you could put this on the warrant as a bond issue. If you then, in the second tranche, which is in June or July, right, coming up, town meetings in May, you could then elect not to borrow and offset it with the ARPA funds, because all those bondings or any other action there too, right? And the other is, you could put the shortfall, and again, just throwing it out there, is the shortfall from this could go on to the sewer rate on their capital side and let them bond it. Because it, it's gonna be, it's a sewer project. You know, so you're gonna offset some of it with what we already allocated for ARPA, three hundred thousand dollars, bond the rest on this, on future sewer income, and get it off the tax rate. From a bonding perspective, it comes off the tax rate, and then if we choose to supplement additional ARPA fund, you could do it that way too, and still do the project, even at the higher amount. In the timeframe you want, if you bond for it at a town meeting, that you get the authorization borrow, because this project's not gonna, even if you tell them the day after town meeting, go ahead, you're not gonna need the money until in hand to pay bills, because the, but based on a completion schedule, there'll be no where's near it by the time you need the money in June. I don't wanna speak for Laura or Michelle or Carl, but just, you could just look at the, the revenue anticipation you would need to get that, to get there.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, obviously you have, if you look at Randy's request is, you, you definitely could do a town meeting vote. Question is, would you be doing the balance over the three hundred, or would you take the one fifty he already had in the budget document request? And take that out of the ARPA surplus, because you're, you're netting a surplus on Dick's, um, Weargate project, remember that was two twenty?
Right.
By the time that's done, that's ninety, so you get a hundred and thirty, already within the existing votes, you could reprogram. And then you could take the balance to a bond.
Net-net, right, but my point is you, you were one fifty short going in, we knew that, right? Before we even talked about this, and now you're short three thirty, that didn't include the one fifty, right?
Yeah, no, the one fifty's within that.
Within the three twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So it's up from there.
Right.
So it's really another, you know,
Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy thousand dollars more.
Right.
So my point is, bond that, put it on the sewer, on the sewer rate, or on, you know, on the, on their balance sheet. And then if we choose to offset it from ARPA with the second tranche, we can do that. And then you don't have to actually go out and issue the bond, because you won't need it.
Which is what we did for the water line.
Exactly.
So at some point, we'll have to rescind that.
Correct, at a future town meeting.
But the other thing is, this is still predicated on when Randy brings you the recommended sewer rate increase that you're going to have to make a sewer commissioners, you're gonna have to be reflecting the additional I M A charges for Westfield, along with Randy's in-town rate adjustment that he needs, plus this capital. So you need to understand, those three components will have to be reflected in any decision you make as a sewer commission on a rate adjustment.
Understood, I was kinda half speaking as a sewer commissioner here. You know, I spoke to, we were, we were funding this ARPA, using the ARPA money on water and sewer projects. They benefit everyone, especially sewer projects, right? And water too.
Yeah.
But, and I also am being very cognizant here of, you know, we started to see it pre, you know, during COVID, with fire apparatus and other equipment, look at what the new ambulance is gonna cost, and look at what this new dump trucks are gonna cost. This three twenty-seven shortfall's five hundred thousand next year. So, if you, if we, if you keep, if you delay it, it just gets more expensive to, to, to fix it.
Right.
So, I think you need to move, to move on it.
If you were gonna move on it and sign a contract for the project, you only have X amount of dollars in hand, so you'd have to make it clear in how the contract is written, that they would have to have a, a, a notice to proceed for the amount that you've already authorized, which is to be three hundred. And if you authorize the other hundred and fifty in the meantime, then they can, you can enter into that for that one, that four fifty number, and that phase two would be the other dollars that you're going to need. That you wouldn't be able to issue that notice to proceed until you had that.
But town meeting's coming up May seventeen, we would have that vote, if we do it, the article correctly, we would have that money in hand.
Right.
On, for, for July one.
Yeah, I mean, you can make, you can make the other ARPA adjusting vote next week, you can do that anytime on your agenda.
I'm not, I'm not interested, I don't, I, I would be more looking at the future ARPA. I think that we kept some of our powder dry on that for other stuff.
Right.
That's just my, that's Doug Morgan's opinion on it.
Well, we did, when we took that vote in November, we did say that we were gonna leave the remainder of that balance, the word that begins with a T, unprogrammed, so that we could deal with any cost overruns, sourcing issues, things of that nature. It's, it's right even in the word, it's in their motion, we recognize that those issues could happen.
All right, my, my whole point was that we need to have different options available to us, you know, and I like, I like what Doug is saying.
Well, you have a slide, we can discuss it Monday night with Randy.
Okay.
We'll have him come in.
Yeah, and so that we can look at all the different options that we have.
That discussion before the Tuesday night meeting with the thing.
Okay.
How does that sound?
Why don't we make sure we have some time to discuss it, you know, I don't know.
Make it an agenda point.
Make it an agenda point.
On your Monday night meeting.
And so that we can spend some time on it. Joe, are you on? Is that okay with you? He's muted again.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. I apologize, where are we now, EMS salaries?
Yeah.
Uh, down to grand total, and that looks okay? All right, so we've gone through every single page, we know what's on hold, we know what has to be discussed at our next meeting, a select board meeting, and, and what we need to discuss with the finance committee to come to an agreement, hopefully. Because it's always better to go to a town meeting with the finance committee and select board agreeing on something rather than being at odds. What else? Remember that one year we played rock, paper, scissors at techno?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I just, you know, we just need to be mindful during that meeting, and our, our agenda allows us to discuss any ideas that would be, uh, these are the line items we've already gone over, bond authorization, so right now you've got the bond authorization for the town hall roof project. You have copies of the draft language and bond council in previous folders, so we'll have that. And depending upon our meeting with the community preservation committee next week, if there was support from them to, uh, support the million-dollar application for some number lower, because it looks like we're, we're closing out that change order that you signed the other night with Russo Bar for Silk Town. I'm just waiting for the other parties to sign it. Then, you know, we have savings on some of those change orders and the other amount that we, we can get that down into the eight hundred range by repurposing and revoting the leftover bond proceeds from the, uh, that project.
Right.
And then some other, Laura and Michelle and council and Tom are going through some other accounts that may help us to be on the lower the H V A C borrowing part too.
Okay, so, well, that's, that's a, a big issue when you think about it. If, if the community preservation committee chooses not to support that application that is being supported by the historical commission and by the select board, and I believe by the finance committee, if, if they chose not to, that, that bonding issue would have to be for the roof and the age back.
On the tax rate.
Would be a serious-
Minus whatever we can offset.
Right.
Understood, but on the tax rate.
Right, that's right, so that's a serious bonding issue.
All right, so, so there's that one, and then of course, if you were to decide you were gonna do, I don't think you wanna do a bond issue for the, the ambulance. I think you just wanna get that, right, if you're going to special town meeting and doing that as an appropriation.
That, that would be mine-
So you don't wanna borrow for that, so the only other decision would be whether or not you're gonna borrow for a certain amount for the Prifty Park sewer pump stick. That's easy enough, we go through this process with the finance committee and Randy, and we decide to go in, in any direction, attorney manly is pretty quick in crafting those bond authorization.
What did we put in for O P E D last year?
Uh, we've been putting in twenty thousand, and, you know, we're gonna be having some O P E D articles on the warrant to re, re-accept it under the new language under the statute by giving you potential warrant articles over the last six or seven months.
Yeah.
So that's one of them, and then another one for the treasure collector to be the administrator of that fund. So that's one of them, and then another one for the treasure collector to be the administrator of that fund.
Right.
So, you know, it, it wouldn't hurt to be, take advantage of, you know, a number near close to fifty.
I, I would certainly support that, because I know we have put in money in, we try to put in at least something every, every year.
Yeah.
Uh, and I know bond council are, when, are bonds.
When we're bonding.
Yeah, that's what investors look at, but I, I think that we need to step it up. And I think this might be a year where we're able to step it up. We're very thankful that the school superintendent, business manager, and the regional school committee have agreed to help us out a little bit on the what they were asking for, for funds. Because, but because they know that, you know, we got thirty million dollars worth of projects just on our, our structures that need to be done over the next, what, five to ten years.
Yeah.
And boy.
Well, that's why I, I might, easier. On it, in a memo that I sent to both you, um, the select board and the finance committee back in March eighteenth was issues on the special would be the snow and ice deficit, the OPEC contribution, I put twenty-five to fifty there. Uh, union contract settlements, because we have the police union. Colas, you already voted on those, vacation buybacks. Obviously, the police chief made a request for uh, both patrol and dispatch overtime accounts, ten thousand each.
Yep.
And the ambulance replacement, any transition costs for people coming and going, because now you're going to have you might be getting the health director on, depending upon how the board of health works out things, a little sooner than July first, so if you have that for May and June, and then you have Tom staying on to train the person, you've got overlap, training, transition cost, yeah. So those are all the things that I have to make sure we work with Laura to reflect on the warrant articles. And then anything else next week that you decide you want to move?
Yeah, I, I.
That would have been, that would have normally been at the, the later meeting, the same night.
Right.
But that's July first money versus instant money, if you transfer money in a special, it is, it is effective immediately.
And that's why I, I think the boat is, is a candidate, the ambulance is a candidate, and the, I, I think I mentioned one other, and I can't even think of now what it was.
A piece of a.
The mower, the big.
I think you were thinking about the mower piece, or.
Were you thinking about the mower, or the attachment mower? Or something else?
There's no better.
Where is it? There is.
Wasn't the copier.
No, it was a bigger item.
Boat?
Uh, no, it was, you know what it was, it was the fire department replacement.
That's right.
And that, it was the boat, and then I think it was the ambulance.
Right, right, right. Those are the three.
Right, and I already mentioned that back in March, what, you know, the ambulance replacement there. And then CARES Act, Laura's got to double check, you know, obviously, we got hundreds of thousands of dollars of CAREC money related to the pandemic. But there is always the risk that there's a certain percentage or minimal amount that would be ineligible.
Right.
So, but we have a number of years to make that up, but if it's a couple of grand or whatever, then we're just going to.
We've done very good on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we secured, I mean, a lot of the.
What we need, and we still have some of it left to take care of, right?
Lot of Plexiglas. In fact, that's the funny thing, they were asking the questions, of all things, Plexiglas. What is it you don't understand? You're going to keep it in between people so they can be in the building working with each other. So that you can keep them protected. Because no one was staying home. You know, we had limited, you know, hours in terms of people's accessing the building, I mean, the people were here all the time, except for maybe five weeks out of the fifty doing the job and getting it done. And that's why we also have that vacation, you know, buyback stuff.
All right, what else do we need to do tonight, or do we have a good handle on?
I think we, this is going to allow us to go into, I mean, we'll, you know, I'm, I'm working with town council Ben Coyle on a draft warrant, you know, but I'm not, you know, we may have it next week, and I'm, I'm trying to get it received by the time you have your meeting with the finance committee. And then Laura and I and others, and others will be working on the special town meeting.
Okay.
I think we're going to have to figure out what the the snow and ice deficit looks like, you know, we'll have to figure out what's going on there, that's usually not an inexpensive item.
Well, I thought Randy was keeping the running tap of that.
Oh, we have that, no, but Laura, this other, this other dollars is the Sutton's cost and all his people, it's not just, it's not just Randy's.
Okay.
Snow and ice deficit is for all buildings and grounds.
Okay, okay.
So there's, there are those things that have to be factored in, and of course, y- you do understand that one of the reasons why we appropriate, you know, free cash to liquidate that liability before June thirtieth is, without doing that, it automatically gets added on to the false tax bill if you don't.
Right, correct.
So it is, it is incumbent upon everybody to understand, it just makes business sense to close your books out on June thirtieth in balance, because that is a, an item that you could put on a succeeding year's tax rate, but we have never done that.
We have never done it, never done.
Decades.
And you're going to remind Mr. Sutton to get the specs on that tip equipment that he would like?
So, we'll make good end runs. Anything that I if we missed anything, ladies?
No.
Gentlemen?
Good gentlemen.
Okay.
Smogan?
We'll have to see when, for next Monday, we'll be able to have a look at this updated before the finance committee meeting, do you think?
Yeah, we're going to have to make some more decisions.
On Monday, so we can have a look at what the
Yeah.
potential tax rate looks like and stuff like that, where we stand.
Well, that doesn't show up on this sheet, this is the expenditure side.
Right, but usually at that joint meeting, we usually had that, so we can start.
On the joint meeting, she can, she can put the thing on the screen and start.
We'll have a pretty good idea, yeah.
Joe, you got anything to add, or?
I'll see you Monday. But he said, I'll see you Monday.
In person?
Yep.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I will set, I will second that, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.